Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to our February 24, 2022, City Council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present in the council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices. Could we please stand for our invocation? Pastor Kathy Thacker from First United Methodist Church of St. Cloud will give our invocation. Please remain standing for our invocation to follow. It's good to have you here, Pastor Thacker.
It's good to be here. Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day in St. Cloud, for our community, for each and every person here tonight, and for the blessings we enjoy in this city. Tonight, we pray for peace in our world, particularly for the Ukraine. For you have said, blessed are the peacemakers. Be with the people who are under attack and keep them safe. Tonight, we ask for your wisdom and guidance for our mayor, our city council members, Lynette Matheny, Colby Urban, Dave Askew, and Keith Trace, for our city manager, for all of our citizens presenting tonight, and we ask your blessings on all our city employees. Heal our landlord. We continue to pray for our country and the world for healing from the coronavirus pandemic. And we lift up the families and friends of those who have lost loved ones. Bring your peace and comfort. We thank you for our healthcare workers and ask that you would give them strength. And for our first responders who protect us. We thank you for our police officers and firefighters and emergency management personnel. We ask that you would keep all the residents of St. Cloud safe, especially those most vulnerable. And tonight, we pray for clarity and wisdom in all of the presentations. Give us respect for one another. And we pray that as we accomplish all of this tonight, that it would be for the well-being and good of our citizens. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you again, Pastor Thacker. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Askew.
Here.
Councilmember Trace.
Here.
At this time, we have an agenda update. We recognize our distinguished city manager, Mr. Surgeon.
Thank you, Mayor. First item on the consent agenda, item E, I'll be pulling from the agenda. Item J, Juliet, in the consent agenda, I'm requesting that that be moved and voted separately after public hearing, item number one.
Item J will be presented under public hearings.
And then also, a public hearing, item number two, I believe that'll still have to be read, but we're going to request that be continued to a date certain of March 10.
Thank you.
I have no other changes.
Do you have something else?
I have no other changes.
We'd like to recognize the Honorable Colby Urban at this time. We have a letter from the Florida League of Cities University. It says, Dear Councilmember Urban, congratulations on completing the online orientation for newly elected officials. Enclosed is your certificate of completion. This online orientation barely scratches the surface of the learning opportunities available to you from your Florida League of Cities University. Among these is our flagship program, the Institute for Newly Elected Municipal Officials. With a nearly 30-year history, this interactive engaging weekend will help you in all aspects of municipal governing, as well as connect you with municipal colleagues from across Florida. We hope to resume in-person training like IEMO very soon. We thank you for participating in the class, and they ask that if you have any needs that they can serve, they would be more than honored to serve those needs. But we would like to congratulate you and
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for joining our council and thank you for this accomplishment. It's good to have you here, man.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, we have a presentation of the employee by the month by our IT Director, Chi Chow.
I would like to take this opportunity to recognize a very special person, Mr. Giovanni Gero. Mr. Gero joined the St. Cloud IT team a little over a year ago in what was originally a temporary assignment with Robert Half. During this temporary assignment, Giovanni demonstrated his technical computer support experience, hard work ethics, and customer service awareness. Through his tenacity and perseverance, sorry, hard word for me, Giovanni has applied and obtained a permanent position as the city's IT network analyst. And within a short period of time, Giovanni applied and was selected as the IT network engineer. Over these few months, Giovanni continued to excel and go above and beyond the call of duty in providing exceptional field support services for our departmental customers, and he is the highest producer in our department in resolving daily incident service requests. Giovanni is known in the city for his client-focused attitude and quick responses. We are proud to have someone like Giovanni in the IT team. Thank you for your commitment in working here at the city of St. Cloud. Congratulations, Giovanni. Job well done.
Sorry, I should have went through this earlier. Should've just let you unwrap it. There, and I think they have a nice certificate they would also like to present you with. Would you like to say something first?
Oh, well, thank you, sir. All right. Oh, well, thank you. I really appreciate it. I am enjoying working for the city of St. Cloud. Again, I really appreciate it. I am doing my best, so I try to do the same every day. Thank you.
And also, he has a beautiful family right there, so if they want to come up.
Good to have all your family here. Would you guys like to come up and just get one here first?
Yeah, yes.
Come right on up.
What is your name?
Janella.
Janella. And how old are you, about 19, 20, 21?
Ten.
Ten! And what is your name?
John Carlo.
John Carlo. And how old are you, about 16, 17?
Eight.
Eight! All right.
And I do.
It's good to have you here. Thank you so much. Thank you. Don't worry. At this time, we have a presentation by Melissa Lucas and the Transition House.
Good evening, everybody. For those of you who don't already know me, my name is Melissa Lucas. I'm the CEO of the Transition House Inc. and Inspire Counseling and Support Centers. As you probably are aware, we received community support funding last year, so I am here to report to you how we utilize that funding and how that benefited some of our veterans here in St. Cloud. But first, I want to tell you a little bit about who we are and what we do, because as I travel around the community, I realize that there's a lot of misunderstandings, there's a lot of moving parts to what we do. So I will be brief. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit founded right here in St. Cloud, right up on 12th Street in 1993, so we've been serving this community for almost 30 years. We're serving in six states currently. We're all over the map. We're in New England, we're in the Pacific Northwest, and a little bit in between. Altogether, we have 19 locations, 12 of which are in Florida, five right here in St. Cloud. We offer behavioral health services, which is mental health and substance use, and we do it in a lot of different ways. For example, outpatient settings, we have residential programs, and we also work in corrections. We have three veterans programs, specifically two located right here in St. Cloud and one in Bradford County. Right here in St. Cloud, right up the road on 12th Street, the original Transition House from almost 30 years ago, we run our SSVF, which stands for supportive services for veterans and their families. It's a grant that we have through the VA, and what we do there is we take homeless or at-risk of homeless veterans and their families, and we get them rapidly rehoused, offer case management with the intention of getting them to a point that they are economically independent. Right up the road on 5th Street, that's one of the programs most people are familiar with, it's an 80-bed residential program, all male. 40 beds are specifically reserved for veterans. We have contracts through the VA that allows us to provide these services. And what we do there is we take homeless veterans, recently incarcerated veterans, veterans at risk of homelessness, as individuals, not their families, and they can stay in our program for up to 24 months, receiving intensive substance use and mental health services, along with some other services that I'll get into in a moment. A lot of what we do is funded by our contracts, and some of it is mission-driven, so we, as an organization, as a nonprofit, choose to provide these services. Some of these include, but are not limited to, food and shelter, substance use and mental health treatment, life skills. This is a huge one that I know was a surprise to me when I started the organization six years ago. You don't think if somebody's homeless for five, 10 years, or even incarcerated, they don't think when they wake up in the morning to brush their teeth and shower and make their bed. Sometimes, we really are starting from the very beginning with some of the veterans and some of the other clients that come to us, so life skills is a huge one. Education and vocational opportunities. We work a lot with community partners. We focused in the past couple of years to find these resources in the community, along with employment and job training. We try to find them permanent housing, and we also continue to assist them after our program through case management. There are very specific areas that our funding falls short, and this is where this community service funding really comes in handy, so this is where it gets fun. Vocational and educational opportunities are great. We have so many resources in our county and in our city for our folks to, whether it's to obtain an industry certification, a professional certification, attend a skills or a trade program, or even some of them attend Valencia UCF colleges. The biggest barrier is going to be the cost of that. So this is where a lot of that funding came in, to provide these opportunities for these veterans that have been vetted, have successfully completed their program, and are really all ready to get back to work and sustain an apartment. So this is just some of what we use the funding on. Also, another piece that I know I didn't think about when we received this funding that came up as we started looking at how we wanted to use it, it's great if we can find them jobs, but what if they can't afford the work boots, or the work pants, or the hard hat, or the tools that they need to start that position? So some of the funding also went to some of those items. Next, this is my favorite part. We're going to get into some stories. I want you to have some faces with the funding, so you can understand specifically how this helps some of our veterans here in St. Cloud. And it was definitely very difficult to pick a few shining stars of the so many that were assisted with this funding, but we're going to try. Here on the left, we have Mark Pope. He came to us after being incarcerated for nine years. While with us, he was able to obtain some professional and industry certifications. He's currently employed at Ameritrail up the road, working full-time. He bought himself a new car, left our program, and has an apartment right here in St. Cloud. On the right, we have Brad V. I'm not going to attempt his last name because I don't want to botch it. He came to us after being incarcerated for 10 years, had a huge milestone. At 45 years old, we were able to help him get his driver's license for the first time in his life. Now, he's working full-time for Pro Green Lawn, and again, living sustainably all by himself in an apartment nearby. Moss Solar has been a huge partner for us. They have so many opportunities for our clients and really good-paying jobs that they can sustain themselves on after they leave our programs. So here, you're looking at Mr. Burgess. He was hired at Moss Solar, obtained some certifications, ended up getting promoted into quality control. He actually came to us after being incarcerated for 17 years. So seeing him proceed through this program and then get hired and be out in the solar farms, successful with a great wage, has been hugely rewarding, and this funding made that possible. Last but not least, we'll talk about Jimmy D. On the left, he was incarcerated for 28 years when he found our program. Came to us, again, industry certifications that the funding assisted with, working full-time at Ameritrail up the road, making a great wage. He bought a home right here in St. Cloud recently. And on the right, you see Lloyd Warren. He came through our SSVF program. He was homeless for a number of years, didn't have any of his documents, like birth certificates, things like that, so we assisted him in getting all of those. Next thing he did is he enrolled in the Valencia Accelerated Skills Program, in the Logistics and Transportation Program, and this is him when he graduated from that program with his certificate. Again, the funding is what makes the difference with this. It really takes a village in what we do, and our goal is to make our clients economically self-sufficient, right? We want them to be taxpayers, not tax burdens, but I couldn't do this alone. I have an amazing team of people behind me, one of which I have to call out. Ron Gray here in the audience has been an absolute godsend to our organization, and what he does for our clients, his passion shines through every day with the guys. He vets a lot of our clients, and when they do run into trouble, he takes them by the hand and works with the employer and figures out how we can make it better. So with your investment and partnership, you guys are all heroes, and you've changed lives for our veterans and their families. I'm really here today just to say thank you so much to the city for showing this support to our organization last year. We recently received the funding again for this next year. We're actually working on some specific categories. I'm excited to come back and report back to you next year how we used it, because we're looking at some of the costs and trying to figure out what percentages we want to put towards, say, tuitions and certifications. So we're going to get more advanced as we go. But really, today, I'm just here to say thank you, report back to you that this funding has helped immensely with some of the things we can't cover as a nonprofit, and I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have.
Well, thank you so much for that presentation. I don't know of any community organization that is doing more to help change lives and get people back on their feet than the Transition House, and I just can't say enough. I've met so many of the clients that have gone through there who've had their lives turned around, 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 many of them who were at the very bottom. And I just can't say enough for your leadership and your team, everyone that works that just does a fantastic job serving those who are often forgotten, and we appreciate all that you do. Does anyone
Thank you.
Have any other comments or questions?
That was pretty good.
That was excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
The next part of our agenda is the Citizens Forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the signing officer prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. We ask that when you come forward, you'll please state your name and address for the record, and we will ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Jay Cochran.
Hi.
You doing, Jay? If you state your name and address.
Jay Cochran, 1868 Drew Liner Road. So I'm here today to talk about the previously approved ordinance number 2021-35, which was a zoning plan amendment on Drew Liner Road from agriculture to residential. And it was about 70 homes approved, which the access was through the existing Lancaster Park East development. And it was approved in the planning on commission meeting on June 15 of last year. I spoke, and as well as Mr. Sean Hindle, the civil engineer, and it was confirmed that there would be no access down Drew Liner Road. All the access would be through Lancaster Park Development, and that I said that it would remain a dead-end road. And then on July 15, it was stated again that no access would be down Drew Liner Road, and it would be emergency access only, and there'd be a gate there with a lock on it, so there'd be no traffic from that development. Then again, on August the 12th, the final one, it was stated again, there was no access down Drew Liner Road, so they have since done some demolition to the existing homes in the back, and we have traffic down Drew Liner Road for those trucks, construction equipment, and dumpsters. So I would like to clarify, and by the way, this is coming in front of you guys again because there's some design changes, so it's going to come up again. So I would like to request that there's some clarity brought, that there is no access, including construction traffic down Drew Liner Road, and not only the residential traffic. And then if there's any complaints about, from the neighbors in Lancaster Park, that the development was built front to back, so they've had construction traffic for two years now going through that development. So I would like to understand when that comes back up for approval. There's a condition of the motion, so apparently that needs to be stated as
Well, obviously, if that's coming up again, you will certainly have an opportunity to speak to that at that time, but all those conditions, they certainly should be adhered to. Construction traffic certainly can't always be halted, I wouldn't think, but if it's something we need to check into.
Yes, Mayor, if you'll delegate to me, we'll look into it. We'll work with the gentleman here, and we'll get you the answers. I'll report back to the council.
Okay. Mr. Surgeon will follow up with on that for you, okay?
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then when it comes up again, is it going to be a condition of approval, or do I have to come back again? And I'm just wondering.
Get with Mr. Surgeon, he can help you answer that, okay?
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sandy Simone. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sandy Simone. I live at 5465 Hanson Road in St. Cloud, Florida. And so I'm coming to, I don't know, complaints. I need help. So as you guys can see from the paper I just sent you guys, that we have 18-wheelers, tractors that keep parking in the middle of the road. And I've called, and we've done the St. Cloud Connect app. We've sent pictures, and to be honest with you guys, I'm just kind of at my wits' end. So here is the little picture of where we are. So Narcusi Road going north, you see where Rumble Road is on the west. Basically, behind the Dunkin' Donuts and Mobile, the new station, that little road is called Circlay Drive. As you can see from the pictures, there's an 18-wheeler that parks there almost every week. It's been there three days now. I called at 3:30 today, city of St. Cloud, we filed a complaint, and I just need somebody to help me, because literally, we have to drive down that road almost every day, because you can't do, you can't go north when you come out of Ralph Miller. You have to go behind the Mobile and the Dunkin' Donuts, and the 18-wheeler, you see the picture, is in the middle of the road. It's kind, well, it's wrong, first of all. Secondly, it's in the way, so when you try to drive around it, it's hard. The other thing that's happening is, I guess, words getting out that you can park there for free. Three weeks ago, we had three trucks parked in that area. Now, when it used to be Osceola County before you guys annexed Center Lake Ranch, they had put some stop signs, where you see the little red dots? They have bashed those stop signs down. So my request is, can you guys help me? Tell me what to do, because I've done everything I think I can do. I've called, I've emailed, I filed complaints with everybody, and I just want some signs. I want them to stop parking, because I also worry about the weekends when the bikers are there, because they're trying to zip around the 18-wheeler too. And I know it's a bizarre thing, but honest to God, guys, I don't know what else to do, because I keep calling and emailing. Let me make sure that's everything on my list. So I'd like to request some signage, and somebody tell me, am I going through the right thing to process it? Because my husband will go on the app, and today was closed. The truck is still there, and there's no little stickers on it saying, you know how when you break on the side of the road, they put an orange sticker on it? There's nothing. And so then, I like your new hair color, by the way, and I filled out a form about the cell tower moratorium thing. I don't know if it can come up again. I'm just kind of curious, like, why? And that's all I got. So if you could give me guidance, I'd really appreciate it, because I'm, like, I'm at my wits' end.
Mr. Surgeon.
This has been going on literally nine, 10 months. Thank you.
Councilmember Matheny, you said you want to speak.
Yeah, so I'm actually dealing with this at my job as well, inside of Neo City. So there, it's kind of a similar situation where it's dead-end roads, and somebody has found it a convenient place to park, and then now the word gets out. So what, so are all these roads, I mean, just to confirm, are all these in the city now?
Yes.
These are all city roads? So what the procedure was at the county was, took something to the Board of County Commissioners and to put no parking signs, and then they're going to start towing? And so I would assume we could do a similar procedure here if we okayed putting no parking signs?
I believe that's, I think that's under the authority of the city manager. I'll get the police chief to look into it and ask them to remove their vehicles, and I'll ask the public works director to get the signs replaced.
Thank you very much. You make me very, very happy. Thank you.
We like it when people leave here very, very happy. That's on the general item. You'll have to address that when it comes up.
Ronald Hood, 1756, up the road, St. Cloud, Florida. Reason I'm here, I just came to say thanks to Don Edwards. So Don has done a great job coming out to the property, holding the developer accountable on the property that abutted our property, and making sure they had the drainage correct and making corrections to what the engineer drew to something that actually worked, because water typically doesn't flow uphill. But he stayed on them, and he did a great job coming But he stayed on them, and he did a great job coming out personally several times to make sure the work was done. So just wanted to thank Don for his work.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Don.
Certainly good to have a nice compliment, and I don't know anyone that probably deserves it more than Don. Thank you, Don. Would anyone else like to speak during the citizens forum? If not, we'll move on to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If any one of the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First of all, are there any items that the council are wanting to address individually? Councilmember Matheny?
Yeah, I'd like to pull A and C. I was going to pull E, but that's gone completely away, right?
Yes, ma'am.
A has an apple, and C has a cat.
Yes.
All right. Any other items? Why don't we begin with item number A? Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. When this agenda item came, you know, across the plate here, it just made me start thinking, like, we're collecting these impact fees for the school district, we're having unprecedented growth in the city of St. Cloud. Are we getting our fair share of the school impact fee dollars coming back into our area? You know, is that, do we have any kind of accounting? I know it's the school district's dollars, but, you know, there's a resolution coming before us to adopt their new impact fees. I did have a conversation with Mr. Dan Manzares, and we kind of decided my concerns aren't necessarily appropriate for this particular agenda item, but I wanted to bring it up for discussion with the rest of the council. I think Ms. Miller forwarded to all of us the report that they get annually from the school district, and frankly, it's not really broken out in any kind of way that's, like, showing how the dollars, you know, in my mind, I glanced at it. I didn't spend a million hours trying to, like, put everything together. But I would like to see if we could reach out to the school district and have them show us, like, how, you know, we're collecting all this money. I'd hate for the money to be going into West Osceola County, because they need a bunch of improvements, you know, like, I would want it to stay here. We are having all the growth, and, you know, just make sure we're getting our fair share. So I wanted to see if the rest of the council would support that direction to the city manager, to work with the school district, to get a reporting to show, like, dollars that are coming from the city, and then, you know, how they're being utilized in the city.
Any objections to that? Mr. Surgeon, could you follow that?
Yes, I was writing it down. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number C.
So item number C, we had a workshop on this, lakefront master plan, and there was a lot of comments, I felt, between the council and the firm that did the work. There was no change to the master plan between the workshop and what's presented to us today. I had a lot of concerns. I know that some of them weren't, I didn't have three people with the same concerns, but I felt like there was a consensus about the intensity of the plan at the lakefront, particularly the plan sheets that show retail, hotel, restaurant, civic center uses all being down at the marina. And I've been assured by staff, you know, that this is a master plan, and it's a conceptual idea, but I think we make the argument to the latter all the time, like, this is the guiding document. This is what we're trying to do, you know? So I'm okay adopting the master plan, but I would like to strike some of the uses down at the lakefront. And, you know, I personally enjoy when I go somewhere, you know, like, I just was in the Bahamas, and, like, there was just, it was undeveloped, you know? There's trees and grass and open space, you know? I just feel like the plan that we're doing for the lakefront is too intense. I would like to see some natural open space, you know, where you can enjoy nature and birds. I mean, we get, if you follow Mr. Askew on social media, he takes beautiful photos every morning down at the lakefront of the birds and the nature, and I just would like to make sure that we're trying to preserve that. And I wanted to see how the rest of the council felt about the intensity shown near the marina, and if there was maybe two more of you who felt the same way.
Councilmember Trace.
Thank you. I had the same comments during my agenda review of, I don't want to give the false pretense that we're okay with every single thing in this document when we adopt the master plan. So I think if we just add some comments on the record, that can be kind of added to the cover page or something of the report, and we can, I agree that intensity and some of the uses in the middle portion, I don't agree with, but both ends, great, let's add more boat ramps, let's get the jet skis separate from everything else, and it's just a matter of what's in the middle, and it's really, in my mind, how we spend the dollars, too, because if you try to adopt everything that's going on in that middle part, $20, $30 million, which we don't really have all at once, so it's like, we're taking the splash pad and just moving it over to a new spot, it's like, why are we doing that? Why don't we just kind of be a little bit more frugal with the money in some of that area? So I agree with you, and I don't know how you want to add that to a motion.
Do we have one more?
I would agree with you, but I would assume council down the road is going to make some of those decisions as well. I mean, we're just setting the stage for the funding and the grants and stuff to come through, and I'm going to assume that's going to take a little while. But not that I want to scratch the whole thing, no, absolutely not, but I think it's going to end up being a council decision anyways, when the grants come through and the money starts, and we start developing it, just like we have a say now, so.
My worry is that someone just starts going down the direction of this, and then it comes back, and it's like, whoa, let's just erase a year's worth of your work to, we didn't, that wasn't really, we weren't all on the same page, so. That's my worry. I don't want people wasting too much time.
That, I mean, that's 1,000% how I feel. I don't want to scrap the whole plan. I think there's a lot of good stuff. I just think, particularly the section by the marina with the hotel, restaurant, civic center, retail, that's just a lot. And so I did mention that in my agenda review, like, you know, I guess I could make a motion to approve it, but strike some of the uses, or, I don't, I guess I'm going to look to our attorney to give me some guidance on how to do it, but I feel the same way. Like, I feel like we can't talk out of both sides of our mouth. Like, all the time, we're like, it's in the master plan, that's what we're doing, but then, you know, here, I'm like, I don't like these uses, well, it's just a master plan, and, you know, we don't have to do exactly what's on the master plan. It's like, I feel like we're kind of talking out of both sides.
The appropriate procedure would be to approve it, if that is the intention of the council. Of course, you can move to add comments that will serve as direction moving forward, so you're not striking at this portion. You're approving it, you're approving the funding, your comments would be noted, and that would be considered as the project progresses.
So you can't say removing this use? You're just saying it's a comment that may or may not be followed in the future?
Well, ultimately, it's going to come before the council anyway, so I thought your intention was to make sure that your comments were noted, and that you have a motion as to those comments, and then as the project progresses, those comments would be taken into consideration, in fact, serve as a direction as the project proceeds. Unless it is the, is it the intention of the council to strike?
My intent was to strike it. I mean, and that's why I was going to do it in a comment, to say, eliminate these uses. I mean, that's my intention. I just, I just think it's, I just think it's too intense. So I'm going to make a motion. So I'll make a motion. Go ahead, Mr. Trace.
I was going to add to it, before you make the motion, of maybe we direct the city manager to throw some funds behind scoping, further scoping and getting a little bit more detail into that lakefront area? Because if we just strike it, then there's a hole there, and, you know, we just got to, maybe we just give a little bit extra funds to figure out exactly what we want there, and what makes sense.
You know, for me, it's just, it's a concept. It's going to have to come back before us. We'll have plenty of time to say, you know, that's too much there, that's too intense there, but for us here to try and amend this master plan, to me, that is not wise, and I would be against it. I understand your concern, but I have no problem with, let's move forward, here's something we're aiming at, but it can certainly be adjusted, it can certainly be amended. It will come back before not only this council, but in a lot of what we're looking at, it's going to come back before a lot of councils. Why should we make the decisions right now for everything that's going to happen down there, as far as we're going to eliminate this or eliminate that? Let's deal with what we got, and let's view what it's for. It's a concept, and we still have plenty of opportunity to eliminate stuff on down the road, but I wouldn't recommend doing it now.
And Councilmember Matheny, that's why the suggestion would be, your motion is as to comments, because your concern, and I think other council members, is to provide some direction as the project is proceeding. I understand your concern about time being wasted, but this project is going to come before you several times, and you'll have the opportunity to opine, and of course, make determinations as to the plan. Striking without consideration as to striking, but for what, I would suggest it's too early at this phase to do that.
Okay, so where are the comments going to go? Are they going to be printed on the cover of the master plan? Are they going to be buried in the agenda that no one will read, you know, or think to pull up to see if there's a comment? Can they be typed on the cover of the master plan?
They're on the record, and yes, they can be typed on the cover to be included as part of the master plan.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that these comments get printed on the cover of the master plan in big, bold letters, and not buried inside of an agenda that no one will ever see, that the intensity of uses at the center of the master plan by the marina is too intense, and that in future, let's see, future evaluations will better refine this area, and I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Councilmember Trace. Any other comment? Madam Clerk?
Public.
Oh, do we have any public comment? Thank you, Trace. If not, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Nay.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
No.
Motion carries three to two.
Okay. Brings us back to our consent agenda. Would any one of the audience like to speak to any item on the consent agenda? If not, could I entertain discussion and/or motion for adoption of the remaining consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Askew.
Second.
Have a second, Councilmember Trace. Of all of the items, with item number E that has been pulled, and item J has been moved to public hearings. Would any one of the audience like to speak? If not, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to public hearings. The next portion of tonight's meeting are our public hearing items. Item number one, Madam Clerk, may I please read that?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2021-24. In ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of planned unit development compatible with low-density residential future land use designation change, adopted by ordinance number 2021-23 for approximately 91.8 acres identified as Pine Grove Reserve, located in the north of East Earl Low Bronson Memorial Highway and west of Pine Grove Road, providing for entering the designation official zoning map, providing for the approval of the preliminary final master plan, following the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability, conflicts, and effective date.
Good evening, council. Erin Stark, Transportation Manager. The case before you is the Pine Grove Reserve, PUD zoning, and the preliminary and combined final master plan. The background on this project, it has the proposed future land use of low-density residential. These slides were prepared when this was going with the companion comp plan amendment and annexation item, but since last meeting, you all approved the low-density residential future land use district, and this request is for the companion PUD zoning. We have assessed the final master plan and found it compatible with the surrounding area, and found no adverse impacts on city facilities. It meets the strategic plan goals of growth management, and here's a copy of the southern half of the preliminary and final master plan. The main access is at the south end of the site. There's a secondary access that's right-in, right-out only, up at that cul-de-sac towards the north, and then here's the northern half of the project. You'll see the large wetland, and at the top end of the project is a framework street. They're dedicating right-of-way for that, but because they're not accessing it, they're not yet constructing that. That framework street is an extension of the Bluebird Groves Parkway corridor that is coming through the Center Lake Ranch project. So once it connects through the school board property to the west of this, it'll tie in, and the right-of-way will be dedicated with this project to allow for that. Couple of details about the project. It's 91.81 acres. They're proposing to build 284 single-family homes. The gross density is 3.09 dwelling units per acre. The residential acres are 74.68 acres, and that's a gross density of 3.8 acres dwelling units per acre. The net residential acres, which is once you take all the open space, all this, just the lots alone, is 21.22 acres, and the net residential density is 13.39 dwelling units per acre. They have some unique lot sizes in here that the standard zoning districts don't allow for, 45 feet, 52 feet, and 62 feet wide lots proposed. The minimum lot size is 4,725 square feet. The minimum living area is 1,500 square feet. That's what their PUD ordinance says, but I think they have some much larger floor plans in the package as well. They have fairly standard building setbacks, 25 for the front, 5 for the rear, 5 foot for the side, and 10 foot for the side street. One of the reasons they did the 5-foot rear setback, which is common in Osceola County, but not in St. Cloud, is because they have amenities on the property and don't anticipate their individual homeowners having pools or things like that in their backyard, because they have those community facilities. The maximum building height is standard, 35 feet, two stories. They have well exceeded the open space required. They have provided 26.96% open space, above and beyond the 20% required, and they have a lot of wetlands that they are preserving on the site as well. They have building elevations in the plan set, which are typically just representative of what they may build in the future, and it's just a graphic to allow you to see how, what they're building is going to fit on the property. In this case, the applicants proposed, they know that you all are considering adopting residential architectural standards in the future, so they have asked that the elevations included in their plan set be adopted now with this plan set to allow for them not to have to meet that criteria later. And so staff, we extensively went through the draft ordinance of the residential architectural standards, and incorporated into their PUD ordinance several of those standards today, so that they are exceeding today's standards, but they won't be evaluated in the future, and they can get some reliability on their costs. And they worked extensively with us on that. You all recommended at the first public hearing for this item, a one-year lease term. This is a build-to-rent community. The standard lease term is no less than 30 days for a normal, single-family home in St. Cloud, and this developer has committed that as long as it is a rental community overall, and that lots are not sold off individually. They have accepted and adopted language in the PUD ordinance to memorialize that one-year lease term. They have, of course, included additional design criteria that we all asked for during the first public hearings, and staff pushed for, the non-manant link clause, the garage window and door architectural treatments, and some composition conditions. And those are all outlined in that ordinance. They have a table in that ordinance that communicates that, so that when we go to review building permits in the future, we can hold them to those things. And there's additional developer commitments above and beyond what the code requires for the potential public use at the north end, which will be real important to us in the future when there's a school nearby. There's several extra acres up there of open space, and they've included terms that say if the city were to wish to use that area for a city park or for access to the school site, they have included flexible language that this PUD won't have to be amended in the future, once there's actual residents there, to allow for that to happen. So DRC staff recommendation, on November 15th, we recommend approval with conditions. They, this was the staff recommendation going into the last public hearing. They met those conditions. They went to the planning commission with the same recommendations. They went to the Planning Commission with the same recommendations, and they made an approval with conditions as well. And then the applicants have since, between public hearings, met those conditions. So, we are recommending approval with all of those other conditions having been resolved, just to carry forward one condition, that the TIA, the Traffic Impact Analysis, for off-site improvements be continued to be analyzed in the subdivision construction plan phase of this project, which is the next step. So, we're happy with the transportation connections they've made and just want to continue that evaluation when it's normally done at the subdivision construction plans. And here's, and I think the applicant here as well.
Does the applicant here would like to speak?
We concur with all, I'm sorry, Ben Shoemaker with AMH Development, American Homes for Rent, 1317, I'm in a rental now. That was my house address for 22 years. I started to give the wrong address, excuse me. 601 Brenmar Street, Orlando, Florida, 32804. We concur with staff recommendation. We've worked on this a long time with staff to figure out the items we could address, and we think it's a very good plan, working, and we will be, good neighbors will be good plans for everybody. So, if there's other questions that come up after some, anybody has a question, we're happy to answer.
He'll stay here. Would any one of the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I was concerned about the agenda item that got pulled, but I still have the same concern in that I don't see any kind of a plan, maybe I missed it, but I don't see any kind of plan for tree preservation. It's literally like 72 acres of clearing, is what the plans say. So, I'm not happy with that. And I don't know if there's, if they can get up and give some detail about what they're doing. In my agenda review, I was told, well, that'll come later, and we'll make sure we're satisfied. And I'm always of the opinion, we need to have the concerns up front, because once the ball starts rolling, it's hard to like put it back into the stable. And so, that's my concern. I see 72 acres of clearing, and there's a lot of trees out there.
Would the applicant like to speak to that?
I believe the agenda item we're on now is specifically on the master plan. We've met the requirements with the landscape plan. The PSP is, I believe, the next item on the agenda, but we have, according to the code, we are required to show what we're saving and also what we're going to deliver. So, there's required trees, and there's retained trees, and that's all outlined in the PSP as well. So, that plan's been done. This kind of, could you demonstrate it?
Ms. Miller, hi. You were going to research into this based on my agenda review. I didn't see an email follow-up on that.
So, I researched the code requirements, and we went over it extensively during the plan review. New construction is required to save a minimum of 60 DBH per acre, and that's the required tree preservation. If anything below 60 DBH per acre is proposed to be removed, there is a section in the code that allows for replacement at a certain rate, and they have proposed to replace anything under that 60 DBH per acre. So, the preliminary subdivision plan section of the code says that they have to document all required trees. We went over this extensively during the plan review. A lot of folks interpret that that means they have to document all existing trees. What they have to do is demonstrate that the trees they are saving are eligible to be counted as preserved trees. If they're too small, then they don't count for that purpose. So, because they knew that they plan on filling certain areas, and there's wetland areas that are going to remain at the elevations they are today, where they could save the trees, they surveyed those specific trees in those areas. It is a large number of trees due to the acreage, but they did not survey every tree on the entire property, because they weren't proposing to save every tree. So, they didn't have to prove that they could save or those specific trees that they plan on taking out. But what they did have to prove was that they would replace trees to meet that minimum code requirement of 60 DBH per acre. And their engineer can probably provide a little more detail about that. But I think some of the questions were, have they shown us every single tree they're taking down? They have not. They have shown us every single tree they're saving and every single tree they're replacing to meet that minimum code requirement. I don't know if that satisfies your question.
I'd just hate to see an entire site just razed. I mean, that's what they're planning on doing. So, that's, I saw on the, I had never seen that before, but we had talked about it on my agenda review, that the survey only picked up the trees they were saving, which I had never actually seen it done that way. I'd always seen a survey of the trees. It was a tree survey, and then they indicate which ones they save based on that. And so, the second part of my question is, because Ms. Miller thought possibly some of the confusion was maybe this was approved in the county first, and it's come to us second. And then I had asked, how do our tree preservations correlate between the two?
I didn't receive that question, so I can't answer that for the county. I don't think that anything of our review was related to anything prior in the county's review. I looked at it in isolation for what our code necessitates. I think typically, folks, when they order a tree survey, they task their surveyor with surveying all the trees, because this site is fully wooded right now. Unlike the adjacent property that's shown in that little cutout. Correct. You know, so normally, folks don't intentionally selectively survey trees, so we always see a survey of all the trees. But the code really just requires that they demonstrate that the trees they are preserving are eligible to be preserved, and that they replace above and beyond that to meet that minimum requirement. And we went through that with a fine-tooth comb.
Do you know, I know we've had this come up before on other sites, and then it was said that a lot of the trees were in like exotic and nuisance and in bad health or whatever. Do you know the quality of the trees that are completely covering the site that we're taking out?
I don't. Maybe they can speak to what they haven't presented up for a review. How about I don't know the condition of the rest of the trees on the property?
We were, quite frankly, we were following the code in terms of what we did and tried to identify the trees that wouldn't be impacted by our development. So, I can't speak to any trees that we didn't save on the survey, because we computed how many trees we would need to place on the site to replace it. So, it's a non-answer. I guess a specific answer would be no, I don't know.
Okay.
Ms. Miller?
Good evening. Veronica Miller, Deputy City Manager. Just to follow up on the question that you asked regarding our code and the county's code, that was an item that you did ask, but it was in reference to the JPA, where you had asked that whosever was stricter, ours or the county, that we try to follow that. So, we are currently having the ongoing evaluation of our land development code. We had a task based on direction that we received from the City Council to compare our code, make some suggestions, add native plants. So, that is actually an ongoing task. I do believe that they're scheduling training for staff. I think it's coming up in the next few weeks, based on the direction that we had received. But as part of that evaluation of the code, the comparison to the county code, will be presented to you.
Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. One of my questions during agenda review was the Holdout Property. I looked up his name. Gomez Property, kind of in the little carve-out on the screen. Just making sure that we don't create the same issue that there was on Drew Liner with development encircling a piece of property, and then there's no way for it to drain out or water goes into it, just making sure we're not creating an impoundment.
I, there was another item that's been pulled off in terms of the drainage plan, but as you also, or you may or may not be aware, we have submitted complete site development plans back in December, as we thought it was going through, and we submitted our own risk on review. So, I'll let Bob address that, but I believe that those plans address those concerns, but I'll let him address it specifically.
I'm Robert Pemesh, 1308 Briar Cliff Drive, Orlando. As Mr. Shoemaker mentioned, we have, we've designed the projects in full several months now. We have a South Florida permit. The drainage is a very major item, part of our design, and it's been looked at in detail. But when we submitted the mass grading, the fill permit request, the city engineer, I mean, Mr. Edwards and Mr. Fiddelinker were very, very, very specific about making sure that we addressed the issue of managing stormwater and runoff, especially along the property lines. So, we've looked at that in detail, and we've ensured that the carve-out property is completely isolated and not impacted by our runoff. In fact, our runoff is all internally captured, but the small amount of runoff that happens at the very border, as you slope down, even that small area that's sloping down towards the property line is, the water from that area is captured, and we're making sure that none of that water affects the property owner. In fact, we've taken measures to help the carve-out property even drain better. As you know, there's a wetland that we jointly own. So, in our design, as you can imagine, part of the property drains into that wetland. But in the post-development condition, we're actually removing that water, so there's less water directly draining into the wetland from our site. So, I think that the carve-out property is well protected, and there's no adverse impacts from our property, and the city engineer is very, very, very much focused on that as well. So, the fill permit, which was pulled today, had all that issues, all those issues addressed. But hopefully, we'll be back here next month to get that approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Any other questions? Could I entertain a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilmember Askew, a second from Councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
No.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
That brings us to item J that was moved from the consent agenda down to public hearings. Could you please read item J?
Request council's approval of preliminary subdivision plan for 283 single-family residences on approximately 91.8 acres of land located north of US 192, east of Nova Road and west of Pine Grove Road.
Good evening, Council. Erin Stirk, Transportation Manager. This is the companion PSP. You usually don't hear these on the same agenda, but we're bringing them forward together. This project implements what the final master plan just communicated. This PSP actually has less detail than that final master plan, so it is consistent with that, include the cross-sections there on the sheet that you're seeing. The background is, they are requesting to build 283 single-family residences. The final master plan had an allowance for 284, but it included a lot that was in the way of a future connection to the school district site. So, at the preliminary subdivision plan, they eliminated that lot to allow for that connection to come to fruition. It's not going to be built right away, but if the school district needs that in the future, their roadways will connect through that area. It's, again, located just north of 192, east of Nova and west of Pine Grove Road. The 91.8 acres, and staff approved this on February 10th, and requests council action of approval of the PSP.
Thank you. Once again, the applicant would like to speak to this item.
Very briefly, we think the other issues are addressed there, but we would like to say that, you know, I want, especially Councilmember Matheny, we are different in development. We're not here developing this site to flip it to a builder. We're going to be the owners of this site for 20 something years. So, in most of my developer experience, a lot of times, working for builders and other ways, we've done a lot of things that, you know, save costs, this is going to be this and everything else. And, you know, in this case, I think we have worked as hard as we can to make sure that this project is going to be good for us and for the adjoining neighborhoods. I just want to point out a couple of things. We have worked with the school board to create an access point. We have designed the lift station to service and be adequately sized to take on their sewer from their bus station and possibly from their school. We have worked on the north side and have been in conversations with the school board about connecting there so that they can get through there. We have given up not only a right-of-way, but we've granted utility easements to pulte homes to make sure that those utilities can connect through that north side. We have dropped the lot sizes from what was approved in the county. We have, you know, increased lot sizes to odd sizes. We have agreed to architectural standards that aren't there. I just, I say that because we are doing that because we want it to be a good project. And that's just, it's important to us, and like I said, we're going to be the same people that you're going to be calling. Maybe not me, maybe I'll eventually retire. But in 20 years, when it goes on, you'll be talking to American Homes, and we'll be there, and we'll be taking care of our property. We're going to be a large resident with a lot of great, great people living in this community. So, I just wanted to say that, and I appreciate all the efforts, and we've taken a lot of time. And Ms. Stirk has done a tremendous job. There's been times where it's been frustrating, but the thing that made it easy was you could tell she was always trying to do the right thing, and we want to do that, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would any one of the audience like to speak to this item? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Lisa Clepper. I live at 1752 Up the Road. My comment or question with this is, after seeing the site plan that they put up there, so with these number of houses, and everything going to drain into the wetlands, are we sure that those wetlands can accommodate all of that water? I know in the developments that they've built all around me, all of those have, are draining into the wetlands in addition to having pretty large ponds that they put in there to collect that water. So, just a little concerned, because this is even a larger number of homes than what's like right around me, and there is, I don't see a pond on there, so maybe I missed it. You know, I didn't look it over that well, but maybe I missed the pond on there. So, that's just my comment on there, is to make sure that the wetlands can handle. You know, there's no more green space. It's got to go somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak to that item?
Thank you. We have-
State your name, please.
Yes, sir. Robert Pemesh, PE Group, 1308 Briar Cliff Drive, Orlando. The project's designed to meet the state and the city of St. Cloud's stormwater codes. There are four large ponds on the property, which address the water quality issue as well as flood attenuation. And by law, we are allowed to discharge into off-site areas at the same rate that, at the same rate as flow is generated in the existing condition from the property. We exceed and meet those requirements. The overflow from the project drains into the adjacent large northern property, well into the north that's conserved. That wetland drains through a ditch running east under Pine Grove into Lake Lizzie. So, the amount of water that leaves our property into that wetland is below the amount of water that leaves the property in its current natural state. So, I assure the resident that the stormwater system is 100% in compliance and perhaps above compliance with the requirements. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Not while discussion and/or motion by council. Any discussion? I move the adoption of this preliminary subdivision plan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from, motion by the mayor, second by Councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
No.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you. Brings us to item number two.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-09. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing the proposed property known as Roan Bridge and further describe herein and recognizing the Roan Bridge Community Development District created and chartered by Uniform General Law and Uniform Community Development District Act of Florida, Chapter 190. Uniform Community Development District Act of Florida, Chapter 190, Florida statutes 2001 and hereafter, acknowledging the Uniform District Charter expressed in Sections 190.006-190.041 Florida statutes as referenced and provided by Section 190.004, Subsection 4, Florida statutes and confirmed by Section 189.031, Subsection 3, Florida statutes establishing the district on the property proposed in this petition and designating the initial members of the District Board of Supervisors and recognizing the designation of powers of the district and providing for severability and effective date.
Mr. Sturgess, would you like to speak to this item?
I'll let Ms. Dunklin do it. I think she'll handle the matter.
Hi. Good evening. Melissa Dunklin, Community Development Director. The applicant and staff have agreed to continue this item to the March 10th, 2022 meeting in order to give City Council adequate time to review all the materials.
All right. Do you have a motion for continuing this item to March the 10th? Councilwoman Matheny, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I have a question. Are they proposing to make changes before March 10th, or they're saying to give us adequate time to review it? Because nothing has changed, and frankly, I was disappointed in that, that it's come back. I mean, what is this, the third time? And I think my comment on staff review was, do they think we're kidding? Like, why does it keep coming back with, like, no change? So is it coming back to be changed or give us time to review what was turned in?
Both. So the applicant and staff are going to tweak the petitioner's agreement a bit. They did provide graphics of their intent for the character of the area, and we want to also include those as an exhibit to the petitioner's agreement.
Okay. Well, I'm fine continuing it. I guess I want to reiterate the fact that I need a really good application to come before City Council. I think we had five people say that, and it's kind of insulting that it keeps coming back with the same application. I'm inclined to not continue it. I mean, but I'll do it one more time.
Yeah, and staff is also going to meet with the applicant next week along with the fire department to discuss more items.
And ultimately, it's my understanding that it's the intent of both staff and the applicant to bring you the best application so that ultimately you can make a full adjudication. And if this one continuance is going to do that, of course, we don't know what the determination is going to be, but if this one continuance can do that, that's my understanding is that is the goal of the applicant and staff, correct?
Any other discussion?
Is that a motion?
I'm not making the motion.
You're going to make a motion? I'm looking for the light.
All right. Motion to continue to March 10th, 2022.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Trace, second, Councilmember Askew for continuance to March the 10th. Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings to item number three.
First public hearing for ordinance number 2022-16. In ordinance of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting the valuation appraisal report based on amendments to the City of St. Cloud Comprehensive Plan in accordance with Section 163.1391 Florida statutes and authorizing the transmittal of said text amendments to the Department of Economic Opportunity for integrity review providing for filing the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publications, providing for applicability and effect severability, scrivener's errors, conflict copies on file and effective date.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember. My name is Dagmarie Segara. I'm the new planning manager for the Community Development Department. And tonight, for your consideration, is the request to approve ordinance 2216 for the adoption of the year and propose amendments to the comprehensive plan based on the findings of the year policy audit, evaluation, and assessment of legislative changes for 2009 to 2020 in accordance to Florida statute. On January pursuant to section, sorry, statutes, it is required for the municipalities to revise their comprehensive plan every seven years, and I should not say revise, is conduct an audit of the policies. And this request in front of you is to meet that requirement by the states. On January 25th of 2021, the City of St. Cloud issued a letter of appraisal, evaluation and appraisal notification letter to the DEO indicating that changes will be required to the comprehensive plan to meet the statutory legislation, and the city hired a consultant to conduct that auditing. The proposed amendments are based on the findings of that audit. The first amendment is to the housing element, to update affordable housing definition according to the Florida statutes. The second amendment is to our capital improvement element, to add a language to identify projects within a five-year capital improvement plan. Also, we are updating language to reserve mobility fee for transportation for capital projects. On the transportation element, we are updating language to refer to the mobility fee as a viable means for funding roadways improvements. Also, we are deleting reference to the transportation impact fees in order to enact those mobility fees. And the last amendment will be to the future line use amendment to add language recognizing existing or previous approved development orders prior to the adoption of the comprehensive plan. The proposed amendments meet the intent of the strategic goals for growth management and public service. On February 11th, staff reviewed this recommendation and planning and zoning approved the ordinance on February 15th, and it is a staff recommendation to approve to transmit to DEO the comprehensive plan amendments. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, and welcome to our staff.
Thank you.
Does anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Could I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Askew, second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number four.
First public hearing for ordinance 2022-19. In ordinance of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, imposing a temporary moratorium of 90 days in the acceptance of any application and/or the issuance of any permit, conditional use approval, site plan approval, or any other official action in the City of St. Cloud having an effect on permitting or allowing development, construction, and/or installation of any communication towers within the City of St. Cloud as more specifically described in this ordinance, excluding with conditions such applications submitted by February 1st, 2022, or approvals and permits for the continuance of any existing communication towers. The temporary moratorium shall apply to all real property located within corporate limits of the City of St. Cloud, providing for severability, conflicts, and effective date.
Good evening. Melissa Dunklin, Community Development Director. Staff is recommending to impose a 90-day moratorium on accepting and/or permitting any applications for communication towers as the code needs to be updated to address the growing need for communication towers. Staff recommends approval, and likewise, it is requested that this council approve ordinance number 2022-19. Staff is available for any questions.
Okay, hold on. Sandy Simon, would you like to speak to this, or you just want the answer, why? Is she here?
I don't think so.
Okay, she's already. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. So in my agenda review, I was asked, I'm sure the rest of you were asked the same thing, like, any ideas that we had to hide these cell towers? I thought initially when I read the agenda, it was regarding 5G. I didn't realize it was for the 160-foot-tall towers. I did a little Google research. There's actually some cool stuff. Like, I forwarded it to the city manager's office, but you can, they're using them in, like, art installations, so they're, or like, if we had a monument sign for downtown St. Cloud, you know, that went vertical, and it says, you know, historic downtown St. Cloud, and it could be inside of that, you know, there's actually some cool ideas. Art, of course, trees, we've all seen. There was palm trees, which I'd never seen a palm tree, which I guess makes sense if there's palm trees all around. And then I thought the art and the marker installation was pretty cool. One installation I saw, they actually put it on the side of, like, a brick, a large brick building, and they wrapped the technology in brick. And I had to look at the picture for a minute to see where it was. I mean, so there are some opportunities. I like that we're trying to come up with standards and, you know, we have to have them, at least make them the least obtrusive. The initial thing I said is get those Disney colors, go away green and fade into the background blue or whatever, you know, maybe we should use that, and then they kind of just disappear. But there's some really cool options that people have come up with.
Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. So, thank you. So the reason for this is we just don't have all zoning categories covered by the use standards for this? Or we just have no standard?
We have very minimal standards, and what we also wanted to do is ensure that our current code is in compliance with any new statutory requirements. So right now, we have the, they are permitted in the industrial zone and in the open space zone, but there are no standards in the open space zoning, so we want to add some there.
Okay. And then on the concealment, like, to me, the pine tree ones are conspicuously, inconspicuously ugly because now it's just this, the senator tree in the middle of, you know, nowhere. There's no pine trees around, but then you just get this one. So some of them, like, I'm just fine with a monopole. It fades away in the background to me as long as it's not obtrusive or it's, you know, the erector set of A-frame ones. But the American flag one on Narco C is nice, too. But yeah, I mean, if we don't have any standards or it's not covering all areas, I'm fine. I just, anytime we throw out a moratorium, it's like, how do we mess up to get to this point to have to do something like that?
Councilmember Askew?
Yeah, and when we write this up, can we wrap it into, like, theme in of our downtown? I'd hate to see one of these big black poles just come shooting up on a corner. So if we can keep that in mind as well, that'd be great.
Councilwoman Matheny?
I had said in my email that I think however we write the ordinance, we should make it flexible enough to look around the area where the pole's going. You know, to your point, I don't mind the ones that look like trees, but there need to be trees around, you know? But that's what I was saying is, maybe it could be, here's a suite of ideas, but it needs to be appropriate for the location, but--
And if it's a conditional use, if they have some new idea, great, then like--
Exactly. Exactly. I didn't have any idea of all the choices that were out there.
Any other discussion? Mr. Colby, you don't, you won't say something about trees or anything?
I agree with Ms. Matheny's comments.
All right, I do, too. Any other discussion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Askew, a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
The next portion of tonight's agenda is council action. Brings us to item number one. Madam Clerk?
Resolution number 2022-002R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida approving a water and wastewater service agreement for Hanover Tyson LLC, Trinity Place, a residential development located in unincorporated areas of Osceola County, on the west side of Pine Grove Road, east of Nova Road, south of Bass Highway, north of Lake Lizzie Drive, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Good evening. Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director. So this is Trinity Place, and we're bringing it back, the date certain. Water and wastewater agreement, this is adjacent to the city, but had started going through the process in the county. So we went ahead and had an agreement with the county to go ahead and continue that. And we're going through the water and wastewater agreement. Forty-two acres, plus or minus, with 311 residential units. And these are all of the items, and I will, I know you're grateful that I will not read them all. So by the check marks, that means that all of the possible items are included in this agreement. So staff recommendation is that this agreement is approved.
Thank you. Would anyone, is the applicant here? I thought you might be.
Sean's probably here.
Good evening. Sean Hindle, Hansel Walter Associates, Ape Broadway, Kissimmee. Agree with staff recommendation, available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
And the property is not 42 acres, it's 92 acres. Sorry.
All right. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we will have discussion and/or motion by council.
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Trace. Have a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number two on council agenda. Would you please read the item?
Discussion of possible action regarding the review and analysis for the city's impact fees for police and fire, parks, and recreation.
Good evening. Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. Before you, you have on council action number two, as you recall, in April of 2021, we had Rafftilis during a council workshop come and present park, fire, and police department fees and analysis of their report. Fast forward, we updated and created a broader scope revising the April 12, 2021 recommendations and comments that were given here by council. And inclusive to that, the comprehensive, the, excuse me, capital plan was not finalized at that time for 2022 through 2026. We have then increased the scope to incorporate that infrastructure need into the analysis as well as adding inflation costs to the projects for the necessary requirements of infrastructure, and therefore have, Rafftilis has analyzed that, and will be presenting this to you across the board. Their presentation will be done by Mr. Joe Williams, who will be coming up to the diocese to present this analysis to you for any comments, questions, and/or further recommendations that this council may have.
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, council, for having me. So we'll jump right into it. I know we've done some of these overview slides before, so I'll be fairly brief. So we're updating existing impact fees that you currently charge for police, fire, parks, and recreation. And the goal is to have growth help pay for the facilities that are required to serve them, to maintain your standards that you're currently providing to existing city residents. We have a combination of historical investments you've made, plus new investments that you will be making, each that has capacity to absorb new development, new people that will be using them. And we're guided by statutory and case law parameters. Basics, these are one-time charges when a new home or new business is built, and it's designed to recover the infrastructure and capital investment needed. So we're not going to be replacing, you know, purely replacing things that are already there, like a playground set, you know, you're not going to collect impact fees and take out a swing and add a new swing that's in better condition. You're going to be doing larger, more project, more improvements that are directly benefit, benefit that new development. We're not correcting deficiencies and not funding operations and maintenance. So no paying salaries or anything like that with impact fees. So there's some statute requirements, and this is important because the statute has been updated each year for the past two or three years. So there's a lot of attention on impact fees. As you all know, in the city and in Florida in general, growth is very high right now, so there's a high focus on impact fees and infrastructure needed. The highlights here are that the impact fees should be based on the most recent localized data. You're collecting and expending the impact fees out of separate and dedicated accounts, which you do. And there's a 90-day notice that has to be given before the fees are implemented and charged. So those will all be accommodated as-- So those those will all be accommodated as you continue through this process. One of the more recent updates, excuse me, that happened um since we last presented was an update to the impact fee statute in June twenty twenty-one. And there was new requirements placed on how impact fees could be increased by local governments. You can see it on the screen, there's limitations of twenty-five percent would be phased in over, up to twenty-five percent increases would be phased in over two years, up to fifty percent would be phased in equally over four years, uh with fifty percent being the maximum, unless there's there's also an item G that I didn't um include as part of this this slide is, provides an exception to these increases. And the, there's basically a few components and one is you have a demonstrated need study that you have the growth and you have the need to do the facility, so that would be the report that we're, we have developed for you. And you have to have two workshops dedicated to uh discussing those extraordinary needs. So in your case, we'll we'll get into the the needs that you have a little bit more, but there's a significant investment for a new police um public safety building. There's multiple new fire stations that are required. There's um nearly sixty million dollar uh CIP for your parks. So there's very extraordinary circumstances along with the amount of growth you have that we feel if if the council wanted to go with full fee adoption, you have the route to to do that in light of these um stipulations in the statute that are presented. So we'll get into the police and fire. Again, as Wendy mentioned, these these projects were identified from your April uh two thousand twenty-one CIP document. And we took those numbers and we looked at industry resources that were available that represented uh cost increases. And we're, you know, somewhat limited to data that's available as opposed to looking at a bid here or a bid there that may come in significantly higher. So we've identified an eleven percent factor on top of your CIP to reflect how costs have changed since that time to what the published indexes um have available. So the the major costs are the public, public safety facility. There's a major replacement and upgrade of Station thirty-two, there's two new fire stations, and there's administrative building for the fire department as well. And then there's new police cars. As you grow, you're able to add police officers to provide service to a larger city service area, more residents. And the car, the cars that would be given to those officers are eligible for impact fees. And then there's the fire trucks that go along with the new stations uh to continue providing fire protection response services. On non-residential, you currently have one land use, we're looking at going to two land uses. Basically, we've carved out the industrial and warehouse category that typically has a lower demand on the police and fire services um through our, what we detail as a functional population methodology, it's it's well documented in the in the report that we have. And this is a, an overview of the significant costs and kind of how the fee is developed. So you can see on the the left side, we have the uh police department fee, a thousand dollar, one thousand twenty-nine dollars. And on the right side, we have the fire at nine hundred and two dollars per single family unit. And this is the the schedule of fees for police and fire for each of the the four land uses that you have. So there's the single family, the multifamily per unit. And the multifamily per unit is is probably the most significant change um where we're increasing the per unit uh ratio to single family from fifty-five percent to ninety percent. And that's based on uh documented data from the US Census data. And we also reviewed um other data sources as well, and the ninety percent was um more more justified than the fifty-five percent that was historically being charged um based on the demands that are generated by those by those additional units. For the parks, um you you all discussed some of these projects earlier, and as you know, there's significant investments that are going to be made, Community Center, Aquatic Center, Chisholm Park. And what we want to uh stress is that growth isn't going to pay for a hundred percent of these projects, but they are going to pay their fair share of these projects as these projects do have citywide benefits. So there's going to be some funding from the existing residents and then partial, partial some funding from the impact fee collections as well to help offset those costs. And a preview here again on the impact fee calculation on the parks and rec. You see, as I mentioned, there was a total of a sixty million dollar program and what we've identified on kind of the the impact fee recovery over the next ten years uh would be about nineteen and a half million of that sixty million. So there, some of these projects will benefit growth beyond the next ten years. So the, some of those costs would be kind of extended into that next ten or twenty-year period after that, after twenty thirty or so. And here again, the multifamily is a ninety percent factor. Currently, it's at about an eighty percent factor of single family, so that's been increased slightly as well. This is a comparison of your existing calculated fees for each of these three services for a single-family home, increasing from three thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars to four thousand seven hundred ninety-six dollars. And how you compare uh locally, you know, that it, you're kind of on the higher end and it it puts you um above a veto there, what if you were to adopt these fees as fully calculated. And the fi- the abbreviated findings and recommendations is to adopt the, adopt the fees um in some capacity so that you have the report and the updated information that are based on recent localized costs to be applicable to Florida statutes. These costs do represent um the current, you know, the current nature that you're in of providing these services to growth that's coming into your city. And um the other, the other two are continue your practice of collecting, expending out of separate accounts. And we would recommend updating these fees and um for, you know, four years or so because that's kind of the statute limitation of updating fees is on a four-year basis. And that's what we had. So any questions or comments? I'm happy to.
You hang around. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, will have questions and discussion by council? Thoughts? Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Um, so thank you so much for this. I know uh one of the big things that I was pushing for was the disparity between the fees for multifamily. I didn't think that was appropriate, um that they were charged at fifty-five percent when I was like, the same number of people are living in a multifamily um unit versus a single family, you know? I didn't understand why we were um so low on that. So thank you so much for um ad- adopting that. And then I didn't say on the table, but I just wanted to say to the rest of the council that everything else is at a hundred percent of the fee. And I know when I first got on council, some of us, three of us were there. We were told by a consultant at the time, you couldn't adopt it at a hundred percent, who, the the person at the time, not you. So um I'm glad that we're adopting at a hundred percent um now as well. And then um I would like to pursue the, you know, going forward with the additional meetings and things like that that we need to do to adopt these. And I guess I was wondering, like, what kind of timeline is it? Like, if we today said yes, move forward before these would be in place? Because it seems like before there was some kind of ninety-day notice, you had to do something and like, what kind of timeline are we, are we at?
I'll, I'll leave the the specifics of the ninety-day notice um to the attorney. We've, we've heard slightly different feedback on that from whether it's, from when it's it's noticed versus when the ordinance is actually adopted. But for the two meetings, there's no specific requirements in the statute on how those meetings are spaced out in time. So that's, that's my feedback on the, on the two additional workshops that you have to have, because it's an ordinance, you have to have your two readings anyways, so you're probably at least um two months out if you were to get the first reading and the second reading. Or, or if you have two meetings a month, you know, but there, there is a little bit of a gap time for those two workshops, two additional workshops.
Correct, and it's ninety days from the adoption.
Okay.
As far as the notice.
So where, what kind of timeframe are we looking at? Like souped to nuts there, that's at like six months?
I think that's a fair estimate.
Like a good guess?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Trace.
Thank you. I, for some reason, I thought we were seeing the first, first of those two tonight, so we'll have two more meetings about this and then plus ninety days.
That is correct.
Okay, perfect. And I just want to say um kudos to staff because every, every time we have something like this come up, it seems like the, the long-term capital planning is getting better and better, so just want to say thank you to staff of putting good numbers in here because, you know, if you don't have good, good information going in, you don't really get good results coming out, so thank you.
Yeah, we, we got great feedback from staff on the capital needs throughout this process.
Any other discussion for council?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion from councilmember Askew, a second from councilmember Matheny, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
Brings us to item number three, the discussion of uh appointments to our boards and committees and vacancies.
I'd make a motion for Dwight Loding to get reappointed.
Second.
Are you ready? First item, the first boards, the community, the CRA board.
Right. So we have Askew, Matheny.
Dwight has requested reappointment and we have a motion and a second.
Yes. So Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
The next committee is the Finance Committee. Is that correct?
And that one is for seat one to prove?
You know, seat one's my appointment and I don't see, I I know we have Jeffrey Rivera, but he's already serving on an important committee, the Planning Committee. I just, I'd rather for us to leave this vacant until we can get someone who's qualified that we make some effort to try and recruit some qualified people to apply and we leave this vacant.
And this year, we didn't get as many applicants as we did last year. But um we can do another push because we do have some more vacancies that could possibly come up this year and we'd have, we'd want to have applications on file.
So can we move on then?
So we can do that.
We can leave that vacant. It doesn't require any motion, does it? Brings us to the Planning Commission.
Okay, so on the Planning Commission, if you would concede each seat that's um, they're all at large, so anyone can make those motions. You could see that down at the bottom, we have requesting reappointments. The only one that is vacant is seat one. And there are two applications, but they are also appoint, re- asking to be reappointed to zoning and they can't be on both, zoning and planning. So we only have one person that has the first choice.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Nanette Douglas to seat number one. Councilmember Matheny?
Mayor, would you be interested in modifying that to move up one of the alternates and then put Ms. Douglas down as?
I would do that. I would recommend then that we move Philip Landry up.
Okay.
To seat number one and then we uh add Nanette Douglas as the alternate number two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Is that acceptable? A motion from the mayor, second from councilmember Trace, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Is the Recreation Advisory Committee next?
Uh, do we need to fill the other?
Sorry, there are other seats on.
So can I make a motion to take everyone requesting reappointment, the four requesting reappointment and reappoint them?
Yes, we can do that in one motion because they're all at large.
Do we have to do those? Can we just do that as a group?
Yes, you can.
Okay. We have a motion that we reappoint those asking for reappointment to the Planning Commission. That would be seat two, three and alternate one. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Sounded like a motion.
We have a motion, councilmember Trace.
Sure.
Mayor, a second. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Ms. Matheny.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Now I believe we're ready for the next committee.
Next, we have the Recreation Advisory Committee. We have two alternates, alternate one and two that are up for reappointment and those are at large. And they both have requested to be reappointed and we also have a third choice.
I'll make a motion to reappoint um Ms. Zilke and Ms. Higgins.
I'll second that. We have a motion with a second for the appointment of Maddy, Maddy Zilke to alternate number one and Sasha Higgins reappointing to alternate number two. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Your next committee?
Next, we have the Tree Advisory Committee. We have alternate number one and alternate number two at large. And we've only got alternate number two that hasn't reapplied. And so we have a vacancy on alternate number two. We have one, a second choice person on that two.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Bill Fimmer.
I'll make a second. Madam Clerk? We've made a motion to appoint Bill Zimmer to alternate position number one. A motion and a second.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
So alternate, seat number two will remain vacant. Brings us to the final committee.
So we're going to leave that one vacant on alternate?
Yes.
Number two, okay.
Unless they have a, you know, Zilke's already serving.
Okay, for zoning board of adjustment, we do have seat one, two, three, six and seven, and those are all at large on the zoning board. And you can see there's going to be some vacancies left on those.
You know, I don't know if this is a point to make here or not, but you know, when you, when you want to serve on a, on a board and then you never meet, uh that's frustrating and the zoning board adjustment rarely meets. I just want to make that as an observation, you know, you've got some good people here that are volunteered to serve and then they, they never serve. I know people in the past have said, you know, I'm not going to reapply because we know I never, we never meet. I don't know if that's something that needs to be addressed or, or what.
Well, I'll make a motion to um.
What?
Reappoint, well, I'm going to make a motion to reappoint David Welty, Gary Jandro, Julian Gilmer.
And I'll second that also. And if you could uh call the roll of that, we'll let her speak in a moment.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Hi, good evening, Melissa Dunklin, Community Development Director. I just wanted to point out that the, specifically for the Board of Adjustment, they only meet whenever a member of the community requests a's, a, an exception or a variant. So if no one from the community asks for those things, we, we don't. asks for those things, we, we don't hold a meeting if we don't have an application. Yep.
Thank you for that explanation. Are we done with this committee?
So, that would leave two vacancies, and we'll, we'll do that along with our other recruitment.
Okay. Awesome. Ms. Lindsey Green, it's good to have you here this afternoon.
Good evening.
Always a joy. You're, always a joy to have you here. Do you have anything for us?
No, I do not. I have no report this evening, just to state that I am glad to be here and always look forward to these meetings.
Thank you. Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. I have one item. Osceola History Foundation this weekend, or I'm sorry, next weekend, March 5th, Dime of the Departed, 6:00 P.M. We have ten seats available. I think some of you have already signed up. But if you'll let us know if you can attend with a, a guest or not, we can fill their seats and support that organization.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I couldn't make that one. I, I never have had to spend an evening with the dead. So, you don't let me know how that goes, okay?
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sturgeon. Councilmember Matheny?
I don't really have anything except to give a shout-out to Engineers Week. Let's see if that's a proclamation. I don't know when it is, but go engineers.
Councilmember Urban?
Also gambling awareness. So, my go.
You cover that one on your section.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out to the rodeo parade. It was a great time and great to see everybody out there for that. So, I just wanted to thank everybody, and that's all I have for tonight.
Councilmember Askew?
I have nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Trace?
All good. Thank you.
And I'll close it out with a thank-you letter from the Education Foundation. Says, "On behalf of the Education Foundation, please accept our heartfelt appreciation for your partnership with the Education Foundation Scholarship Program. Last year, over three hundred and fifty Osceola County students received scholarships with the support of one hundred generous donors like you." As a donor, your gift means that you, means more than simply tuition payment or textbook. Your donation tells a student someone believes in their dream. And she said enclosed our thank-you notes from some of your scholarship recipients. And enclosed with this were letters and cards from sixteen of the scholarship recipients that we gave scholarships to as a city, expressing their deepest appreciation. I have those available if any of you would like to review those. With that, I don't have anything else new. Brings us to our information section and report. Thursday, March the 10th, there will be a city council meeting at 6:30 here in council chambers. Thursday, March the 17th, there'll be a city council workshop, workshop, strategic planning session at 3:00 P.M. here in council chambers. Friday and Saturday, March the 25th to 26th, the Institute for Elected Municipal Officials will be held at Fort Myers. We have issued the following proclamations for your knowledge. Proclamation recognition of March for Mills Month, a proclamation recognition of the Irish-American Heritage Month, a proclamation recognition of Problem Gambling Awareness Month, and we issued a proclamation and recognition of Engineers Week once again. You guys deserve kudos for sure, putting up with the city councils. Warrant list number six is available for the council's review and anyone else's. With that, there's nothing else on our agenda. We will be adjourned.